This is a reminder to all members of the public that is participating in our virtual city, virtual park, parks, recreation and open space meeting that if you would like to speak on a particular item during public comment period, please click on the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. You'll be prompted to speak up to three minutes when it's your turn. For those who is participating by telephone and would like to make a public comment, please press star nine to request to speak. Thank you for your participation. Okay, Chair. Whenever you're ready.
All right, I have successfully unmuted myself. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the virtual special meeting of the City of Albany Parks Recreation and Open Space Commission occurring on Thursday, May 7th, 2020. So thank you commissioners and members of the public who are participating in this meeting under these most unusual circumstances. So the city staff gave instructions for how to participate and comment on the during the meeting. So I won't repeat those instructions, but they are described in the agenda. So you can consult your agenda to review the instructions for how to provide comment during the meeting if you wish to do so. So we will begin with the roll call.
Okay, good evening commissioners. So Commissioner Abbott.
Here.
Commissioner Frank.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Negus.
Here.
Commissioner Patterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Sardinas is absent. And Chair Noble.
Here. All right, thank you. So the next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the February 13th, 2020 meeting. Does anybody have any comments about the minutes?
No, I moved that the minutes be approved as written.
I'll second that. Okay, so staff, for the approval of the minutes, do we need to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to do that?
Yes. So Commissioner Abbott.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank.
Commissioner Frank, you're muted.
Aye, sorry.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Negus.
Aye.
Commissioner Patterson.
Aye.
And Chair Noble.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so those pass. So the next on our agenda is public comment on items not on the agenda. So this is comments for anything that's not on the agenda. So if you wish to speak about our one discussion item, which is the sugar sweetened beverage tax commission recommendation, you should wait until that agenda item. But if you have any other comments for the commission, now would be the time to provide them. So again, there are instructions in the agenda for how to notify us if you wish to provide a comment. And once you've given us that notification, we will activate you to allow you to make your comment.
Here, we do have a public, we do have public with public comments.
Okay.
First up is Jeremiah. Go ahead, Jeremiah.
Hi, good evening, city clerk, and thank you and commissioners up there. I've loved Albany Parks my whole life, Memorial Field, Moyle Park, Cougar Field, the Bowl area. I remember a long time ago, I was at the meeting where we pretty much gave the Bowl to East Bay Regional Park to manage the property. I'm pretty sure we still own it. But all East Bay Regional Park is doing is managing. Don't let them take it from us. East Bay, East Bay Park District, they're a district, they're their own district. They got their own police, own fire, and they're all about acquiring land, bank-owned land. They're all about acquiring land. Please don't lose this to them just because they want to manage it. Also, that Bayfront Trail Park, that trail that's going across the racetrack on the beach there. I noticed you guys cut down a lot of trees on that hillside. And I know there were birds nesting in those trees. Now they have no home. And also on that cement area on the top where the the racetrack, the turf club parks up top, you got this new trail and you got this gray cement area where it looks like it comes to a corner, okay? And a car could park there. The other day I saw people sitting on it. And it's a 50-foot fall. So please go out there and look at that for safety. It's very unsafe. Very unsafe. I hope you know where I'm talking about. Also, our parks, the Bowl, maybe they could have, I'm not sure if the Bowl has a dog shower or a dog washing facility. I haven't been there for a while, they may have. But I'm suggesting that our public parks have a public shower in our recreation department. I mean, if we have recreation and we say, hey, come do zumba, come exercise, maybe we can offer a shower. They have portable showers available. Um, the creeks area behind Sprouts, there's wild turkeys that live in a, they roost in a tree up there. And it's a wildlife protection area. So just want that to be noted. And also what's going on with the BART? The BART track trail, we need pedestrian crossing signs on every single BART crossing. I think I was on Washington going up. And there's just no crossing, there's no pedestrian crossing signs for joggers or bicyclists to go from, to cross the street. There's a crosswalk, but there's no neon fluorescent signs. So please, for recreation purposes, please put up some high-visibility pedestrian signs on the BART trail tracks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy or Jeremiah. So just a reminder that we're asking folks to limit their comments to three minutes. Thank you. So do we have city staff, anybody else who wishes to comment?
Yes. Next up is Susan Schwartz. Go ahead, Susan.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Susan Schwartz, the head of Friends of Five Creeks, 20x-year-old, all-honuntier group. I like to try to update you from time to time, and I thought I would talk about what we're doing during the coronavirus epidemic. You have a page, and I won't go through it all now. Your time is limited. We have done a good deal in terms of public outreach and information. A small group of our experienced volunteers are working in ones, twos, and occasionally threes, very carefully, very well-spaced, trying to keep our many sites from getting too far behind. We're succeeding. It's a lot of work. I particularly want to talk and ask you to think about the issue of camping on Codonice's Creek because we have changed our thinking. There are always campers on urban creeks. At present, there is no realistic possibility that our cities or state are going to house all the homeless people. The reality is, if I were homeless, I would try to find a small camp far from everybody and stay there. That is what is happening on Codonice's Creek in particular. And we feel that we want to try to keep these people there for the duration as long as it does not become a really dense encampment. That is a very difficult task. People in Albany should know this because you've been through it twice at the Bowl. And it's very tricky. We had to press Berkeley to remove a very bad camp just this week. These people were building fires, they destroyed wiring, they were doing just everything possible bad. They're, they're gone. Most of the camps, I would say it's about a dozen on Codonice's between the railroad tracks and San Pablo are nighttime only. They're empty in the daytime. They vary. Some are absolute pigsty, some you can just barely tell that somebody sleeps there. So we're trying two things, and we don't know whether either of these is going to succeed. This week, we started giving out a little package of two heavy-duty clear plastic bags with a note saying, would you please use these to protect your belongings? Because a lot of the trash results from dew and dirt ruining whatever these people have. And now it's garbage and they leave it. And would you also pick up the trash? I can't, I can't tell you yet whether this is going to have any effect. Our second effort is a, probably a long shot. We would like to have a portable toilet and hand washing station as close as possible to the creek. Now realistically, that would have to be on one of the through streets with heavy traffic, or you'd have all kinds of problems. So that's six than eight. The six neighbors are opposed. That leaves eight. Alliance Graphics in Berkeley will support it. I'm trying to work with Berkeley. I don't know yet whether they will permit such a thing. We would appreciate your support, or at least not your opposition. And if we don't succeed with Berkeley, we're going to come to Albany. So I would like you to just think about this. This is not a simple question. I do not know whether a port, we will pay all costs, including maintenance. We've got the money. So this is not a financial drain on anybody. We want the ability to remove it if it's not working, and we would let any city remove it if it's not working. It may not work simply because these people may prefer finding an isolated place in the vegetation to using a porta potty. And I, having done a lot of camping, can kind of understand that. So it's, we would like to try. We also are looking for other ideas. If anybody has any other thoughts about how we could, this is life or death here. As far, these people are doing something that may keep them alive. On the other hand, there's a tremendous amount of pollution going into the creek, and if we're not careful, they make it impossible for the public to use that creek safely, and the trails are extremely popular, very valuable. So I would, I'm interested in your ideas. I hope you will think about this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Any other public comments?
No.
Okay. Moving along to the next item on the agenda is announcements. So staff, any, any announcements?
No, no announcements at this time.
Any announcements from commissioners?
I just wanted to let the commission know that Commissioner Abbott is, just had to get off his internet, so he's, he's trying to reestablish, get back on.
All right, so next on the agenda is presentations. Any presentations today?
No presentations.
No. Okay, so agenda item number 61 is the sugar sweetened beverage tax commission recommendation. So staff, is there a presentation or any introductory comments on this agenda item?
Sure. So I included a staff report as part of your packet. The commission did start a discussion on an SSB recommendation at your February meeting, which was a little while ago. The staff report reflects some of the comments that were received at the time. And if I can go through those. Let's see, the commission talked about including capital projects such as the installation of LED lights at Ocean View Park tennis courts, plumbing to run water to the beach, and the reorganization of Ocean View Community Garden plots. The facilitation of a farmer's market in Albany and of additional community-supported agriculture, CSAs, were also proposed. And and then increase youth equity and access to exposure to recreational sports, such as learning to swim and ride a bicycle. And then lastly, the commission also discussed installation of bottle filling stations, free cooking classes and free fitness classes in parks, which are currently all funded by the sugar sweetened beverage tax. I also provided a summary update of the current expenditure plan. We've, and I think it's pretty much the same as the one that I provided in February, but basically things have moved forward since July 1st, and we've installed one bottle filler at City Hall. We've continued to provide free nutrition, cooking and gardening programs to the community and have found that some of the, although most, a lot of them were very successful, some of the challenges in offering free classes is that some people would cancel at the last minute and we'd have no shows. The free fitness classes in parks have also continued, and we've actually started to provide, we will be starting to provide some virtually in next week, I think it is. And we'll see how that goes, but basically Tai Chi, that dance parties have, and dance parties have been very successful at the park as well as yoga, which is a class that we will be offering next week. The crossing guard program is, was also funded with SSB, and the intention is that it would continue to be since no other funding source has been identified for, for this program. And then the Healthy Me Music and Movement Program in the, in the school districts, transition kindergarten and kindergarten classes also was implemented in, in a number of preschools and kindergarten for a total of 228 students, children served. And this program is really tailored to the purpose of the measure as it educates children on the benefits of nutrition and alternatives, healthier alternatives than drinking soda. So so that's what I have so right now. As far as the financial impact, the measure we've received so far as of probably this, we're in May, as of April is $653,000. We've, the council has appropriated a total of $594,000 over that, over the last two fiscal years. And our estimates for the revenue coming in next fiscal year is about $200,000. It is lower than what we had originally projected because of the current situation. And the city council will be holding a study session on May 18th. And the commission, the commission's recommendation will be part of the, the staff report for that study session. And the commission is also welcome to come and make your presentation at the meeting.
Thank you, Isabel. And so I think how I'd like to proceed is similar to the way we normally handle items like this in the agenda, to ask clarifying questions of staff and then take any public comment and then bring it back to the commission for a discussion and a recommendation to the council. And so I do ask that we begin with just quest, clarifying questions of staff and hold off on a discussion and expression of opinions until after we've received public comment. So without any clarifying questions, so yes.
I have a couple. Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you, Chair Noble. The first question is, can you let us know when the timeframe would be for implementation? I'm just trying to understand, if this is approved in May, when do these programs actually begin? To help me understand in terms of shaping recommendations.
So this is for the next fiscal year. So programs would start July 1st, but considering the current pandemic situation, depending on the programs funded, there may be some delay in implementation and of course appropriation of funds depending on what programs the council decide to move forward with.
So that, that, one of my questions has to do with some of the things that are impacted by both summer schedule and school schedule. For example, if you could provide any guidance around what the current thinking is around all of the many summer camp options that the city normally offers or recreation programs that are normally offered in person in the community during the summer and how or to what extent changes have been made, because I'm not aware of whether those programs would change, and that might change some of my thoughts around what would be appropriate or a good use of funds at this time.
Right, the situation is evolving, and we have not made any definite determination as to what we'll be offering this summer. We're looking at possibilities of offering some virtual programs as well as a hybrid program that would, if we're allowed to provide in-person programming, we could. And that all depends if we have the capability of, of providing that programming in person based on the restrictions and recommendations that will come from the county.
And then the other question I have has to do with the school crossing guard program, which is $130,000. I know from the past year estimate anyway, which is a large portion of the 200,000, but, but I just was curious, how does that, how is that impacted if there if school is not in session, or is there any balance from this year, or is that paid anyway? I'm just kind of trying to gauge how that fits in a bunch of way.
At this time, again, because we don't know where the school schedule is going to be, we would expect the contract to be very similar to the one that was proposed, was accepted for last fiscal year. But with the caveat that if school days, you know, school day become, is longer or has this, you know, we've, I've heard of the, the, the school having two shifts, and so that would require more crossing guard shifts, so the, you know, the, the, the cost of the program could increase. We would definitely continue to work with the city council as these realities become clearer to us and so that they are able to make the best decision considering, in consideration of the information available at that time.
And then my final question is about the water filling stations. I think at our last meeting, what I understood was there are fewer spots still remaining that need those, but maybe two or three at most that could be thought of. So in terms of budgetary guidance, the estimate we have was, I think, for when there were six to eight needing to be done. Can you offer roughly what one or two of those filling stations cost, just so we can understand how to scale that cost for a smaller number of stations?
Right, and it all depends on the location and access to water. So all of the, depending on, it really depends. So, you know, I, and I don't have the costs with me, but for instance, replacing a water, a bottle filler in an existing facility which has all the pipes and it's just, you know, replacing a water fountain for a bottle filler is less expensive than you know, trying to install something in the community that may require more plumbing because the, there's no existing infrastructure that leads to the water source. So it all depends.
Okay, thank you. Those are the, those are my.
Any other questions? Commissioner Frank.
Thanks. I have a question. I just want to clarify. I heard Commissioner Patterson, we got 200. Is it about 600,000 that has been spent in past years? Is that right? I just want to make sure the figure.
Yes, it's $594,000, I think, has been appropriated by, in the last two fiscal years for the for the program. But it's, it probably is not, that, that dollar amount is not reflective of the amount of funding spent. It's appropriated, but not necessarily spent. We'll have more concrete numbers at the study session as far as actual num, actual funding spent at this time.
I see. And then I have about the classes are, about how much do we allot to those free classes?
Yes, there was, for free, the free nutrition, cooking and gardening classes, we allotted $35,000. And free physical fitness classes in parks was $20,000, so a total of $55,000. And I can tell you from, based on the preliminary, preliminary numbers that I've looked at, you know, the, those, the, the, the actual cost of running those programs are less than what's been appropriated. So it is feasible to conduct these classes for less, less money.
And then just they were 55 over one year or over?
Yes, one year. Yes.
Any more questions? Commissioner Martin.
Yeah, I had a clarifying question in the staff report. It says something like commissioners should not factor in the current pandemic, and the reasoning is the given was something like, we don't know how quickly these funds will be spent. So approving something that might address the pandemic needs isn't necessarily appropriate. I wanted to hear some more clarification on that, but also the flip side. Should we factor in recommending things that maybe couldn't be implemented if, if the, when, as the pandemic continues?
Right. Again, because it, things are so uncertain, it's really hard to gauge what could be implemented and what could not. The purpose of SSB funding is, you know, is related to public health and, you know, the education and education of, of, of proper nutrition and the, in trying to educate also people to not, to the benefits of drinking other beverages other than sodas. So in thinking of the ordinance and the purpose of the the purpose of the, of the, of the funding, using those funds to, to anything related to COVID would probably not, probably be not the best use of the funds.
Right, but also the flip side of that is, say for example, nobody has proposed this, but say somebody proposed the city providing free water service at Music in the Park, and it costs $50,000. Let's say, and Governor Newsom has said there's going to be no large gatherings for concerts until there's basically a cure. Like the last, that's like the last stage. So if, if we happen to know that kind of information, is that something that we should factor in that say, you know, maybe we won't fund the water at Music in the Park this year?
Right, exactly. So I think I would keep the, your statement more vague, that if you want to provide water, you know, you, you wouldn't specifically say that it's for a specific program, but for any program implemented, you know, in the future when possible. So we'd have to keep things, you have to keep your statements vague because as far, the status of special events, community events at this time is you know, is that they're not gonna, they're not gonna be implemented unless something changes drastically.
Any other questions? Commissioner Abbott.
First off, sorry about that. My internet went off. It's kind of odd, but great time to do it. I just have a quick clarifying question. I just have a quick clarifying question. I see when we're talking about the nutrition, cooking and gardening programs, it says 745 participant engagements. Can you cash that out a little bit? What is a participant engagement? Are those unique participant engagements?
Oh, Eva, do you remember if they were? I'll have to ask Eva because she's the one who gathered that information.
I believe they were unique.
Unique, yeah.
No, I don't believe they were.
They wasn't. Okay.
So are those, is, is a participant engagement, has somebody signed up and attended a class? Or is it somebody went to a single class, like a single class meeting? I'm just trying to get an idea for how many people were touching with these programs.
Yeah, so it's not the number of individual, it's the number of people who participated in each of the classes. So for instance, you could have one person participate in three of our cooking classes. So that participant was counted three times because they registered for three of our classes.
Okay, and that's for the whole class, not just like a single meeting of the class?
It's the total number of all the classes, for all the classes that were funded with SSB.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That, that's it. I think that's clear. Thanks.
The classes I'm aware of were just single session classes. So like I went to two of them. They were just single session classes, the one I went to.
Yeah, but not all of them were single classes.
Right, that, yeah. Okay. My internet's back, so I'm going to switch back. So I'll be gone for just a minute, but I'll be right back.
Any other questions?
I have one more question, which is, I understand not wanting to necessarily take the pandemic into our guidance, fully, but I also wonder, is it appropriate to make a recommendation towards something and have the mechanism of delivery of that class or of that, whatever it is, be able to, like having the language that it could be modified based on whether it should be delivered virtually or in person or something like that?
Yes. Basically, that's what I meant by a broader statement is that you could make a, sorry, there's a little bug. Okay, there's a, that you could make a broader statement about a specific class or a specific program, but leave the implementation of the programming up to, up to us to do based on the, the guidance that we get of, from the, the county.
Okay. All right, I have a number of questions and the first one is a general one. And it's the same that I emailed you today, Isabel, about. And the question is, what is the ability for the council to to alter the allocation plan midway through the fiscal year? Are they locked into what they adopt or can they adjust as time goes on?
Right, so again, because we're in such uncertain times, we will continue to, we will work with council to figure out if, and bring them the information they need to make appropriate changes if needed. They do have the, you know, the, the control to change the expenditure plan should, should it be needed because of the current situation. But we will provide them with the information needed so that they can make an informed decision based on the changing, the changing climate and economies.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of specific questions. The first has to do with the installation of the water bottle filling stations. So last year, the city allocated quite a bit to that item and then only installed one bottle filler at City Hall. Is that, am I reading that correct?
Yes, so last fiscal year, nine, 2019, we installed seven. And then this last year, fiscal year 20, we installed one. There were plans to install another one at the seniors center, but the seniors wanted the bottle filler and water fountain combination and the space dedicated to, if you've been at the seniors center, it's a pretty small facility. And the existing location of the fountain did not accommodate that, that model. So they've elected not to have a bottle filler at all and continue to use the, the, the fountain in the, in the hallway and use the, the sink in the little kitchen area to fill bottles.
So is your sense that in fiscal year 2021, that there's going to be a continued need for the funding of additional water bottle filling stations?
I think because of the, the funding available and not knowing how much we're going to get in revenue because of the situation that, that we're in, it's difficult right now to predict whether or not we would want to install more fillers because we've basically installed the, the fillers at, at the look, at the locations that they were meant to go to and that were the easiest to install, like at our public facilities, at our parks, and one on the Aloney Greenway. Any other locations would have to be scoped out and again, access to water and the, in the creation of the infrastructure to support bottle, bottle fillers will probably be more expensive than what we've encountered in the past. So at this time, I, I'm not so sure that bottle fillers would be a priority because we have already so many. We've installed eight so far.
All right, my last question is with the Healthy Me Music and Movement Program, what kind of feedback have we gotten on that program in terms of whether it was seen as valuable and well received?
Well, I know the school district is interested in continuing that program. And if you attend or look, well, if you watch the council meeting, we will have a short video that shows the, the classroom setting and, and the, you know, how the class is run and I think it's been very beneficial. We, we have, we did not conduct a survey from, from the family, so I can't provide you with direct feedback from participants. But I do, it is my understanding that the school district would very much like to pursue that program next fiscal year, in the next school year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from commissioners before we open it up to public comment? No, okay. So public comment, so.
All right, yes, we do. We have one. Jeremiah, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I will try to limit to three minutes. I have a few questions. SSB funding, I've been working on getting school zones for over 10 years now for our, our city. Crossing Guards came up right when I was right spearheading Crossing Guard project. You know, everybody wants to take some money from this general fund. First of all, it should not have been a general fund in the first place because that gives everybody wanting some of it, everybody. So it's about spending the money right. How much does it really cost for a water bottle thing? You were kind of very vague. You said, oh, it depends on the installation. You never gave a number. Is it 1,000, 10,000? Okay, so you should put those water stations, obviously, I was going to suggest the seniors center, like the library, recreation department. It's a great solution. Replace a, a drinking fountain with a water filler, you know. But at all, where the, where the schools, where the kids play sports. Now this money, sugar, sweetened tax is for education. Albany's the number one schools. And we need to keep it that way. So all this money, we've got to keep it on education. Teach our kids the right stuff. And put the bottle filling stations where they play sports, volleyball, wrestling. Put one in the wrestling room, number one, right? You know, so I, I really like the fact that you guys have dance parties in the park. That's great. I believe my wife Elaine taught the first Zumba class in Albany, the library. It was through the Alameda County Library. And the recreation kind of stuck their nose in there and kind of bullied Elaine out of her Zumba class in the, either stone room. And now all of a sudden, the recreation offers Zumba. Go figure. You know, Albany schools are number one. And this money is for the kids. You guys keep talking about these water filling stations. Okay, that's great. But it needs to be for the kids. So that's about it. Just please focus on the schools and those water filling stations. And the park is fine. The park is great. So thank you very much. And I need a, I need an answer on how much those filling stations cost, please.
All right, thank you, Jeremiah. So any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Yes, Susan Martha is next. Go ahead, Susan.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I wrote a letter to the commission, which I sent as an attachment. Unfortunately, it looks like the letter didn't make it into the packet. So I don't know if you saw it. It would be great if the letter, as well as the email that says, please see the attachment, could be included in, in the public record and in, in your packet. But basically what I said in the letter was that I, I think it would be great to use some of the funds to encourage people to use our beautiful waterfront. And that, you know, in these pandemic days, so many people have found that it's a great mental health resource. So many people are saying, thank goodness we have the bulb. And yet there's still lots of people in Albany who don't know that it's there and who don't know that you can safely walk and bicycle there. And so what I think would be great and what love the bulb, the organization that I lead, that creates a lot of events at the bulb, we would love to create more programming to help people learn how to walk and ride to the bulb and also to create the kind of arts and exercise and Tai Chi and dance and, you know, participatory art projects that we've done. And I think that it would get a lot of people exercising who may not necessarily be athletes, who may be interested in music or art, but then they have to walk half a mile from the bulb parking lot to get to the event. And our, our participants end up exercising a lot. Another thing that would be enormously helpful to our environmental education and native garden program, as well as the arts programs that we hold, would be to have some kind of either a portable building or a shipping container where we could store the equipment. We need wagons. It takes a lot of equipment to get stuff out to the bulb because you can't take a vehicle out there. And if you all know the Shorebird Nature Center at Berkeley and the wonderful programs they have there over at the Berkeley Marina, those are all made possible by what started out as a portable and a shipping container. And when you have that kind of storage and classroom space, it just makes so many more things possible. So if you wanted to invest substantially in something that would long-term encourage healthy habits and also make it easier for people to participate in events because they wouldn't have to lug the equipment and the stuff down there and also would make it much easier for us to run events, that would be great. And if you're not ready to make that kind of investment, you know, just, we would love to have your support for some of our programming. We've really enjoyed working with the Friends of Albany Parks program. You know, the staff support for that, we've gotten more than 60 people out. Gardening has been wonderful, but we raised them on the funds privately to buy the plants. So I just hope you'll include the bulb in your thinking.
Thanks, Susan. Any other public comments? Any hands raised? Okay, so I'll bring it back to the commission. So I think what we're looking for here is a recommendation to the council that will be in a, you know, not dissimilar form to what was sent to them in 2019, which is essentially our, our recommendation for how the tax revenue should be funded. And I, I think, I think probably the best way to proceed on this is to just go around the virtual dais and hear people's thoughts on this in terms of priorities, things to continue from the current program, things to remove, things to change. And then hopefully in that process, we'll, we'll see some common threads, some consensus. And then we can use that to cobble together a specific recommendation that we can all agree on. Does that seem like an okay way to proceed? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Martin.
I was thinking that the, in the agenda packet, there is the document that says the recommendations that we already had. And so that would be something that could kind of frame the discussion or people's, you know, thoughts to go down that. If people have a way of looking at that while we're doing this. Also, we've heard from people emailing and speaking at the public comment today. So those would be other things to factor in. And of course, it's been several months. People might have their own ideas since then to discuss. But certainly the organizing document of what our own recommendations were, I think that's good if we could go down that.
Yeah, is there, good question. Is there a way to, oh, sorry. I was just going to say to share a screen to look at those recommendations, or maybe that's not appropriate, just curious.
I have them up on my screen, but I'm sure maybe Isabel or Anne could share. My only concern with using last year's recommendations as our guiding document is that any of the suggestions that have been made since then aren't really on that list. And so I feel like I personally have some changes in my thinking since last year. And also those estimates of price we've heard are not accurate because the classes cost less than we thought. And the bottle filling station isn't as actionable. So that number anyway was based on putting in six to eight and it's not, if we put in one or none, like. So I guess that's my, my thought is that I appreciate that as an organized way to go down it, but I don't think it takes into account other ideas that were suggested to us or ones that we've talked about at the February meeting or since.
Yeah, so, so let's do this. Let's, let's go around the virtual dais. And if, if, if an individual commissioner wants to sort of comment on the previous recommendation and suggest some specific revisions to that, great. If other commissioners want to express other ideas that are not in that memorandum or provide any other types of comments based on public comment or other thoughts, that's great too. And then once we've all had an opportunity to say our piece, we'll circle back and, and hash out the details. So does anybody want to go first? Commissioner Negus.
I think one of the significant factors to look at is the funding that's available. And I know that we don't have the, the numbers on that. But given that the next fiscal year, it looks like the budget is going to be significantly less. I think that we need to look at where the money was spent for this past fiscal year and what the largest sums of money were for that. And it looks like that was Crossing Guard program. And for me, prioritizing safety, given that we really do have to pick and choose, that's, or at least it's likely that we'll have to do that, prioritizing safety with the Crossing Guard program and looking at bike safety too, given that's also a school, those are school-related programs. I am of the opinion that those should be prioritized. And then other, other recreational activities can certainly be rolled in as funds are available.
Okay. All right, who's next? Patterson, Commissioner Patterson.
So I always look at what the original purpose of this tax was. And it was to encourage healthy behaviors, particularly healthy lifestyle behaviors around healthy eating and minimizing intake of sugar, sweetened beverages and also healthy active lifestyles that sort of counteract obesity and diabetes, which is sort of how I believe it's written in the, in the wording. So the things that I'm looking at, and I agree, I agree that helping children get to school in an active way on foot or on a bike is definitely part and parcel of that. If there were other areas where $130,000 could come from, I might sort of encourage us to look other ways. But it's been clear the last couple of times that we've talked about this, that Crossing Guard program doesn't actually have, there's not another pot where that's coming from. So I'm definitely in support of the Crossing Guard and Safe Routes to Schools programs, which is $150,000 of the $200,000. I think the Healthy Me Music and Movement program also sounds like it's serving a number of young students. Beyond that, I am a big proponent of the bottle filling stations, but since it sounds like we're at capacity with what is feasible financially, I also would be interested in the fitness and cooking classes. I think those have been successful. I did participate in some of them. I also think that some of those could be delivered virtually if we find ourselves in an ongoing pandemic crisis. And what I would ask is that we consider as a part of those classes, looking at other locations beyond just Memorial Park. So I know we did, I believe we did something at, I think there were some opportunities at other parks, but I would love to see us look at something like maybe offering one class at the bulb and see if there are enough people that would go out there. And I'd also love to see us think about different ages and different fitness levels as those classes are programmed so that they are really able to meet the needs of a wide range of community members. I think there was a lot of variety in the ones that were offered this past year, and I'm not sure which ones had the most. It sounds like the dances in the park had the most. But I'd also suggest that as part of that free fitness, we could look at some of that youth equity access programs in, in that same sort of circle of free fitness classes in the parks. Could you offer a try it type of program around bicycling or something like that so that people who don't have access to that and their families would have an opportunity to learn that as a part of some kind of park based free fitness thing? I'm not totally clear what costs are involved in a farmer's market. I think if that's a low cost thing, that's positive in terms of helping people move towards healthy food choices. But we also have a lot of farmer's markets in the nearby area. So that would be less of a high priority for me. Then some of these other things, which I feel like allow people access to things that they otherwise might not be able to afford. So and by my math, especially if those classes are coming in less than what they are costing on the estimate we had from last year. I think all of those fit within $200,000 and I would be supportive of Crossing Guard, Safer to School, Healthy Me Music and Movement, and the Free Fitness and Cooking classes with an eye towards making sure there are some virtual Plan Bs in case we need to go that route. And looking at equity access and covering a wide range of populations in our city with some of those free programs.
All right, thank you. So who's next? Frank, Commissioner Frank.
Hi, thanks. I, when I'm looking, it's really hard for me not to think about what we have ahead of us without, you know, so it's strange to me to not be able to kind of speak to that. But it's interesting because I think I, I recommended or I had, one of my suggestions was the LED lighting because I heard that come up so often with the tennis courts. And so my thinking is I definitely agree that the school crossing guards are really important. And and even though I'm not saying this based on COVID, I just think we are seeing how we're using our public spaces in these last few months and how we may need to continue to use our public spaces for the next year. And I think our parks are so important to our community, especially since people aren't able to be as mobile. And so so yeah, I definitely support school crossing guards and just any kind of, I think the Traffic and Safety Commission also had some other just safety, traffic safety, which we're not commenting on here. But I think that as we're moving towards being more like local and all of our transportation or in all of our ways to get around, I think it's great to just really encourage anything, anything that provides safety. So school crossing guard is number one for me. But I would say that I also really think that if we can use any of this money for capital funding to improve our parks, I think that would be a real asset. And, and I, and the reason I think the LED lights would be still really relevant here is they would increase the number of hours that we can use various park spaces. And so, I mean, I'm just taking myself as an example. We don't ever go to the park unless we know that there's not a lot of other people there. And one of the times to go is in the evening time. And so it's great because nobody else is there. And so to the extent that we can really extend the hours that we can use our parks because of social distancing, I feel like that's a real benefit. So I would just put a plug back into the LED lights. My concern with, with the cooking classes in particular are what you had mentioned Isabel before, that they weren't very well, some of them were canceled or some people canceled last minute. And I just, I wonder, it's not that, and if it's a low cost, I don't object to keep, to keep that funding going, but I do think that cooking classes online don't seem, don't seem just as meaningful to me just personally. So I would not want to recommend something that may have to go online. So I would say unless we got a really outpouring of like, this was such a great cooking class, I would, I would not, I would not want to recommend some of those free classes that were not well attended or just cancel, you know, people canceled last minute. So I think for me, it's the school crossing guards, the, anything to extend the, or to basically allow more recreation opportunities and longer recreation hours on, in our parks. That's all I'll say. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin.
Yeah, I would echo a lot of that. A focus on safety, which includes the crossing guards and the bike safety training. I think that's important as well to get kids out and I think kids have been, I know my kids have been riding bikes more that that's one way they can get out and still be kind of distancing. And I would say that the classes that we, you know, have been popular would be kind of a second tier. And cooking as well. I think cooking, I think the intention is great because you know, you're training people to cook healthy food and which directly ties into the the health, you know, personal health of the, of the ordinance, that intent. But as we've heard, if, if there's lackluster, if it didn't go, wasn't a success, then I don't, I don't think we should put, I think that should be revisited whether to put more money into that. Going down the list of some of the documents here, the LED lights at Ocean View Park. I would be for that. Except that, and it, it may be, and there's a lot of good reasons to do that. It's just that having gotten into the weeds on that whole area with Commissioner Abbott and Mark and Public Works, that what happens ultimately to the lighting there is not clear. And that's a whole kind of iterative design thing that, you know, maybe even the poles will be moved and, you know, there's, so that's like a, I don't know if it makes sense to designate money for one aspect of that whole project at this stage, although there needs to be better lighting there. It's just, it's a bigger issue. And I, I actually am in favor of trying to run water to the beach. So I, we heard Jeremiah talk about that. We have these pit toilets there with no way to wash your hands. So I think not just a water filling station, but like a basic hand washing station or a public sink or something. So I think that should be investigated whether or not there's a pandemic. And I know there's no water near there, but I think it should be investigated and get, we should get a quote, the city should get a quote for what it would take to run water out there. I think a lot of people would be appreciative of that. Regonizing the Ocean View Garden plots, that's a whole thing in itself. And I don't know how much money would need to go into that or I would put that in the, the lower priority for station of farmer's markets. There was one on Solano for a while. And it did okay, but it didn't, it wasn't self sustaining as far as I could tell. That was maybe 10 plus years ago. And if people have other ideas, like the other commissioner said, I don't know what, what money is involved with that. So I would, before we would, you know, I would put that on a, on a lower priority. I don't know what the city's cost really is for that. If anything. And let's see, yes, learning to ride a bike commissions, bottle filling stations. So yeah, I would prioritize bottle filling at the beach. Blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. And then if we look at the previous years real quick, previous years. Yeah, there were some like on key route median between the high school and the middle school. That's a highly trafficked area for kids. I don't know if that was investigated. If it wasn't, I think it should be reinvestigated. There may or may not be water near there. So that's would be, need to be assessed. And I would also put in a plug for you know, not just having things at Memorial Park. Memorial Park is in the northeast corner of the city. And so it's not really, for some people on this commission, it's a neighborhood park. For some people, it's a neighborhood park. For other people, it's quite a trek. And if the city could look into classes, having more outdoor classes could be good for social distancing, either in Pier Street Park, things towards the west side of town or on the bulb as was suggested. I don't know if that would be a dollar figure for us, but something for the Parks Department to think about. And then I would say the proposed bill for Love the Ball to do things out there on the ball, but I think that would help getting people out and about. I noticed in the, the led, the note, there's no particular dollar figure asked. We did hear a request for storage and so that would be something that that I think, you know, should be considered. I don't know in this round or, but that would be certainly something that could be facilitated. Otherwise, there's sort of more requests for working with the Parks Department. And I think the Parks Department should consider ways to do that. And I'd like to hear more about how that could happen. And I'm not quite sure what dollar figures would be assigned to any of those. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Commissioner Abbott.
Oh, no. I, I think that means me. Okay. So people who've heard me talk about this before know I've been a little frustrated with the way this has always been framed. That it has to be something related directly to healthy lifestyles and like, I mean, the, the language of, of the actual ordinances is, see if I can bring it up here. This general tax will provide revenue to be available for the general needs of the people of Albany. Now, I, I understand this is something I need to take up with city council. It's not for this venue, but I'm asking myself, you know, we're a small town. We're always struggling for resources. How can we get the most bang for this, these dollars? How mu, how can we get the most out of this? Especially since we have dramatically fewer dollars this time around. So I'm thinking of things like a free street tree program or boosting the sidewalk repair program. Things are going to benefit people for decades rather than a one hour class that they may or may not remember a month later. I like, I love the idea of a portable building down at the bulb that could be used for classes and, and infrastructure there. Or I even like the idea of, of working, using some of this money and working with East Bay Regional Parks to, to purchase some beach wheelchairs for, for folks in wheelchairs to use the beach at Albany Beach, even though that's the East Bay Park property. So that's kind of where I am. I think that there's no question, in, in my opinion, that the Crossing Guard should be continued. There's no other source of that money. And that's, that's a key use. That's, that's clearly in everybody's interest to continue. But after that, I'm really looking to kind of break out of this locked into these, these classes that are only, you know, to, to the degree that they, they depend on this money. The purpose of this, right, is, is to be less every year, you know, because it's supposed to be working to discouraging people from using the sugar sweetened beverages and therefore lower the income. So eventually we're gonna have to cut these programs as that money falls out. So I would try to break away from that and look more at these things that are gonna last for a long time and help a lot, a lot of people. The one more thing I would say about the classes is I much prefer the idea of a scholarship program for any class or for any range of classes rather than offering free classes. Not everybody who takes our free class would be unable to pay for it, whereas there are other people aren't taking classes, other classes because they can't pay for it. So I like the idea of just a scholarship program for any class, or if you wanted to restrict it in wellness and lifestyle classes. But that's my two, my, my two cents. I, I, I think I need to talk to city council about this though.
Okay. All right. So Commissioner Frank, you, you have something to add?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I appreciate the comments and discussion because I think after hearing Commissioner Martin in his insights on why LED lights wouldn't work at the tennis courts, that makes me sort of revise my recommendation. And after hearing what Commissioner Abbott said about, you know, just infrastructure and planning or planting trees, city, is street tree funding, I do agree that I, I would really, my, my intent talking about the LED lights was really about like long term fund, funding for something that could benefit Albany in the long term. And so it doesn't have to be the lighting, you know, LED lighting, but I do like this idea of street trees or other infrastructure that can enhance our liv, the livability of Albany for all residents. And and I do actually agree with, I, I didn't mention, when Commissioner Martin and Al were talking about the bulb, I forgot to mention that I totally agree. I think that's underutilized resource. And with social distancing, it is something we should really be promoting as a city because people don't realize the gem of the bulb and it's huge. And if we can, you know, provide people or just let people know about that resource, it could really provide a benefit for all of our residents, I think. So to the extent that we can partner with Love the Ball, I don't know how. I don't really know how. And I like this, you know, if there is something more concrete that can be proposed that would, that we could help support, I think that would make sense. But I do like the idea of promoting the activities and recreation at the ball.
Okay. So I do want to provide some of my own comments, but Commissioner Patterson, do you have more to add?
I just wanted to add that I forgot to comment, I think it was submitted before this on bike racks at the schools. I also am supportive. I'm supportive of anything that allows people to walk or bike to school. My question is, and it related a little bit to Love the Ball, because we had a value that we had passed about wanting to partner with nonprofits and wanting to partner with community organizations. Are there other community groups that could say, supply the racks if we paid money to install them or vice versa, or something like that related to the bike racks? Because I just wasn't sure if it's on school property, if that's actually even in our purview, but I also know there's a capital expense related to putting in bike racks or something. So I would just add, I don't have any understanding of what the cost for bike racks are, or whether there'd be community partnerships that could help to support that. But I do believe that originally, when we were exploring all the things related to this tax, we were looking for capital expenditures and we were looking for things that were not programmatic. And it sort of shifted over the years as we were trying to fill up more of that space. And, and so I don't see a lot of things on a list of things we've talked about that are permanent, long-term things. And I, I, yeah, so I just would say that bike racks are something that I would be supportive of if there's other support in the commission. But I would want us to think about whether there are other like strollers and rollers or groups that maybe could help participate in that with us.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna offer a few of my opinions on this. And thank you, everybody, for, for your thoughts. I think there, there, there is some consensus here. So it should make our exercise of formulating a recommendation not too difficult. You know, I, I think that for me, I know that we've been asked to not think or factor in the pandemic in our recommendation on this, but I personally think that that's an impossible thing to do. So we're, we're, we're asking to make a recommendation for the allocation of this, of, of this revenue from the soda tax in order to
from the soda tax in order to promote healthy behavior, healthy lifestyle, address public health needs within, within the community. And we don't really know the world that we're going to be living in over the next year, over the next five years, over the next 10 years. So we know the world that we've lived in over the last year and in the past. But I don't think any of us really knows the world that we're going to be living in, in the future and in the immediate future. And, and I think, I think not, not taking that into consideration in our recommendation doesn't serve the community particularly well. So, so I, I personally can't think about a recommendation on this without recognizing that the world that we live in will be different in some way. We don't, we don't really know how, but it will be. Personally, I'm, I'm predicting a slow burn over the next year until a vaccine is developed. So what does that mean then in terms of, of promoting healthy lifestyle, public health within our community? And what does it mean in terms of addressing our community's needs in, in the best possible way? So, so that's, that's kind of my perspective on this. And so in terms of, well, what our recommendation should be, I, I agree that the, the crossing guard program should remain a priority. There's no other funding source for this. It's something that's very important in terms of the health and safety of our children and of our community. And I strongly believe that we should continue to use these funds for that program. I also very much like the programs that go into our schools and reach children at a time in their lives where they're most impressionable and where I think these programs can have a, a long term positive impact on them. It, it, it sounds like the, the Healthy Me Music and Movement Program is something that the school district has liked and wants to continue. And so for me, continuing to, to fund that program that reaches TK and kindergarten seems like a good use of money from my, from my perspective. And, and then, other than that, I don't really have particularly strong opinions other than I'm anticipating a fiscal crisis within the state of California. And I'm anticipating that the city of Albany is going to be faced with a horrific budget situation for the 2021 fiscal year. And it seems to me that other, other than the crossing guard program and these relatively less expensive programs that, that reach children in the schools, that we don't really know what the city's priorities are going to be. And I guess if I could have my, my way, I would, I don't know, want just sort of almost like a slush fund, that's not the right word, but a, a, a revenue source that can be used as the city sees most necessary in order to meet the needs of the community over the next year. And, and, you know, if, if the commission is interested in, in through these capital improvements and, and more permanent physical improvements to the built environment that facilitate a healthy lifestyle, that, that, you know, I, I would, I could be sort of comfortable with saying giving the city the flexibility to use a certain percentage of the revenue for those sorts of improvements if we, if we want to, if we want to kind of narrow it down a little bit. But I guess my, my instinct is just, is that there's going to be, there's going to be, there's going to be tremendous unmet need within the city of Albany and the state of California over the next year. And sort of recognizing that is important and enabling the city to address that need in, in the best possible way would be wise in this, in this moment. So I guess those are my thoughts. And my guess is that we can probably sort of pull together a consensus recommendation for the council on this. But maybe, maybe before we kind of start doing that, I wanted to bring it back to other commissioners, see if, if there are any other thoughts.
I just wanted to make a comment which relates to what you're talking about, Ben, which is related also to the question I asked at the outset. It's very difficult without understanding sort of how the current recreation programs are going to be shifting or are shifting to meet the sort of demands of the pandemic, to understand sort of, if that's already being taken care of, then my recommendations would be different. If that as a, is if there's a funding gap to be able to make things virtual or to make them more accessible. I just saw, I think, within the last week, you know, engage at home, or I forget what it's called, but the sort of virtual community center sort of online opportunities. So that for me, like, filled a certain gap that I was seeing in terms of families that are trying to figure out how to move forward in, in this time. I think it's also difficult without understanding some of the costs associated with some of these things to know how to weigh and prioritize them. So like, I actually think having a portable space to store things at the bulb so that you could do classes or you could have equipment or, like, I think that's a great idea. I have no idea how expensive something like that is. So it would be hard for me tonight to be able to make a recommendation of where that should fit in priority order without understanding if it's $10,000 or way more than that, or, you know, where does that fall? So I actually agree about the cooking class. I, I feel less supportive of the cooking classes, and I did attend them and I saw they, they're, they're neat. But I, I think they wouldn't translate as well virtually as say like fitness classes could. And I also think that it's different to provide nutrition classes for children than it is for adults in the community. So I would be more supportive of things that focus towards children in terms of those healthy lifestyle behavior pieces. For the fitness, I just think it would be nice to offer a range if we're going to do that. And if we're not going to do that, then that's a moot point and maybe it will be met as a need through the recreation programming. But I, I do agree that it's kind of feels tone deaf to try to make these decisions without thinking at all about the world that we're currently living in. Because also, what happens if we fund $130,000 crossing guard and there's no school? Like, I don't know, that could happen. So does that money go back in the coffers? Does it get redirected? Is that going to go towards a fund that's going to help the city in this big gap? I don't totally understand how that part works. And so that's where I have a little bit of challenge. But since I'm supportive of that program anyway, I, you know, that I haven't, yeah, those are my comments.
So, so I just want to jump in here real quick and say, we're an advisory commission, we're not allotting money. We don't, it's not up to us to give the city council the flexibility, they have the flexibility. I frankly have little doubt in my mind that most of this money is going to go into the general fund when the emergency hits, as Ben is gesturing and, and, or I'm sorry, as Commissioner Noble and Commissioner Patterson is suggesting. Our role, as I see it, is say, here is our recommendation for what to do with, with the money. But, you know, we know that you're going to use it however the city is going to need it most. So I, I don't think that we need to, to say, you know, they know, you know, they know that all of these things are, are coming down the pike. So I think our role is just say, here are some ideas, evaluate these along with all the other needs of the city. That's kind of what I see us doing. And I would, I would just quickly say, I keep meaning to bring this up. I have a lot of experience with the farmer's market question, the problem is where to put it. And there's no good solution to that problem. So I, I'm not sure it's really a practical suggestion in general, but that's, I just wanted to mention that because I keep forgetting to mention it. I have some experience there.
Any other, Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I would just second that, that the, I, I don't think we should tie ourselves in knots too much worrying about, you know, second guessing what's going to happen with the pandemic specifically and what the city should do when the stuff hits the fan and the budget's down by 30% or whatever it's going to be. I, I agree with Commissioner Abbott that I think we should, you know, think about the practicality to some extent of what we're recommending, recommending. I don't think we should just say, you know, no recommendation, the city council should do what it wants to plug a budget hole. I think we should actually should make recommendations consistent with our commission as best we can. And then also we have, I would, there have been people with their hand up to speak as well. I don't know when the attendees, when we should loop those in.
Well, on that last point, I, I presume we're handling this the same way as we would an in-person meeting where public comment is closed. And ordinarily, we don't reopen public comment. Staff.
Yes, that's correct. The public comment period for this item has, is closed.
Yeah.
Now, if we had specific questions for people who had already spoken, is that something that commissioners can request?
Yeah, I think that if a, if a commissioner wishes to ask a follow-up question of a member of the public, that we can accommodate that.
Okay, well, I was going to ask Susan if she had a specific ask and a dollar figure for Love the Bulb programming, but I see she is not on the list at this time.
I'm sorry, let me just jump in with one other quick comment. I, I think that I read this line about not be specific to the COVID-19 pandemic and associate shelter in place order a little more narrowly. I think, I interpreted that to mean it shouldn't be, you know, buy masks or gloves or something very specific and timely. We can make a suggestion that kind of carries it forward. And the understanding, we don't know when it might happen. I think that would not be inappropriate, but just not something that, you know, was immediate and, and very specific. Not that I have a suggestion there, I just wanted to make that point.
And I see Susan Moffett is back and if she's able to address specific asks that the commission should consider as far as we heard about the storage container, if there's any dollar figures associated with. There were some general programming, you know, things which I think the Parks Department should look into. But if I could ask Susan if she's able to respond to any of the things that she was requesting that have dollar figures to them that we could consider.
So so Susan Moffett is raising her virtual hand. So city staff, can we activate her to speak? So Susan, I think your talking is permitted now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, we actually have a power outage in my neighborhood, so I just had to, I, I missed like the last five minutes of, of whatever was said. What, but I set up my phone as a hotspot. So, but to answer the question of the dollar figures, you know, a 20 foot shipping container is about $2,000. And a 40 foot is something more than that. I don't really know the cost of a portable. I think that the city staff would have a better handle on that. I mean, I just Googled it and it says anything from like an, you know, a construction site type portable, $10,000, $45,000. The city had two portables there that were used during the removal of the, of the encampments. They had two that were at a living, you know, they were kind of high quality portables because they were used for housing people. And I think the city would know what the cost of those were, but a shipping container is very cheap. And I'm sure that one of the primary concerns of city staff will be maintenance and vandalism and that sort of thing. And I'd be, I happy to address that and how those issues might be addressed. But when the portables were there during the relocation of the encampments, the, there wasn't a big graffiti problem, there was a, there was a little bit of tagging. And same with the, the new vault toilet, East Bay Regional Park District. There's, you know, I've seen actually only one tag since, since I've been there. But I know you're interested in the dollar figures and I could get that together, I just, I don't have those right now. I mean, the other thing that would cost money and that would be really great is signage in Albany that directs you to the shoreline and would be possible to do that in a really attractive and artistic way with, for example, like brass plaques in sidewalks that say, you know, one mile to the waterfront. From, from the library, it's 1.3 miles to the bulb. It would be fun to have some artistic signage along the way that would help direct people. I could, I could get dollar figures for that. You know, to put on a bulb fest properly at a fairly small scale should be about $30,000. That was for, you know, a, a two day festival with a dozen groups. And that's, you know, a festival is, is just one approach, you know, individual events, smaller events that are really helping people get to the waterfront are another option. Another question, especially in times of pandemic, is creating videos that help people learn how to get to the waterfront. And those would have lasting value that, you know, people, and it could also be fun, you could set it up so that it's interactive and people shoot selfies along the way and post them or whatever. And again, there could be an art or an interactive element to that. So, you know, I, I, I didn't put together a budget because I wasn't really making a specific proposal. But if you all are interested, you know, it, it's really helpful. I didn't know whether you all would be interested in kind of the more infrastructure end of things or the more programming end of things. And it sounds, from what I'm hearing, that, that you, you are interested in kind of long lasting infrastructure that will facilitate future programming. But of course, then it has to be thought through what is sustainable, you know, in terms of, of using those, those facilities. And I, I could answer those questions, but I think, I kind of feel like this is an ongoing conversation. And I think that, you know, it, it would be really important to talk to Public Works and city staff about, you know, what all the, the long term issues are, which, you know, I'm confident could be addressed. But I just want to make sure that we're taking all those concerns into account. The other thing I would say, you know, in terms of leveraging dollars is that if we have the facilities and a commitment from the city to use the bulb in a creative way, there's a lot of place making funding that's available from National Monument for the Arts, the California Arts Council of Creative California Communities. You know, a lot of communities have gotten, you know, those Creative California Communities grants, which are for place making, which are for, you know, place making, that is using the arts to, to activate public space. You know, those grants are 130,000, but there's a certain matching that's required from the city. Same with the, the NEA grants, I mean, some of those are big, you know, they're like $400,000. And those grants are aimed at programming, but they require, you know, the city to be a, a partner and, and to make some kind of commitment either in dollars or in staff. So I, I just think in terms of thinking of how to spend this, this money right now in a way that we can do it even during COVID, that I feel like investing, because it takes time, right, to, to, to buy a portable or container, install it, get everything going. I, I, I think that that might be a good use because then it'll be ready to go when, for, for future events and programming. So I'm sorry, I don't have more, you know, specific numbers, but I would be happy to put that together depending on, you know, what you're interested in. Oh, and I just wanted to say on the bike racks, just FYI, there is, you know. Private funding available for bike racks, the the rebar bike racks that are at the beach. I wrote the grant for that. For for strollers and rollers some years back, and that was from the Rails to Trails Conservancy. And the city installed those, so the city took on the the work and the expense of installing them, but the the purchase of the racks themselves was privately funded. So there there are places where where that kind of funding is available.
So I think we're at a point now where we can kind of flesh out a recommendation based on the. Comments that have been provided so far, and it seems to me that there's general consensus that. We wish to recommend that the crossing guard program remain within the. With within the expenditure plan for the same amount that it was for last year. Is that is that true? Is there any dissenting opinions on that? So that's a, that's a big chunk, so that's a hundred and thirty thousand. And so Isabel, are. The 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 total budget that we're planning, that the city's planning for is two hundred thousand, right?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, and I think that there was general consensus that the safe route to school program. Should be continued as well. Is that? Is that? Generally how people feel about that? I see, I see, I'm my thumbs up too. Just sort of looking, looking back, that's the. The the program, at least last year, was focused on fourth and fifth graders during PE classes. The drive-your-bike program, education and training for safely riding their bike, maintaining their bike. And just using their bike for transportation and recreation. So I think there's general consensus, I think. To include that as well, so that 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 brings us up to. A hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand out of two hundred thousand. And beyond that, I'm not quite sure. If there's general consensus on the on. On the remaining amount, I. I commented on the Healthy Me and Music. Program. I didn't really hear much from others or.
I was supportive of that one.
You are, you are, okay.
I personally, I mean, if we're, you know, assuming the two hundred because of COVID, that, you know. I I think that also it's, I don't know how that program would be implemented online. I just, I can't, you know, divorce that from. If we're gonna assume we only have two hundred, then we should also assume, you know. Just differences in being able to program. So to me, I don't, that wouldn't be something I'd support as a priority.
Can I just ask the clarifying question of what you're saying, though, because the crossing guard also won't be able to be used if nobody goes to school, but we're we're making recommendations, assuming they'd go forward. Would it change your vote at all to say, if can be delivered in person in a school setting for two hundred and seventy-eight children, then we'd support it. But I wouldn't support this being done in a virtual space. I'd rather that money be saved for something else. Or you would just in general aren't supportive of that program as a use for these funds?
I mean, to me, it wouldn't be one of my top three priorities. So period, but if it were on the list, I would say only if it was in person. So thanks for that clarification. But if I'm, since I'm unmuted, I would also say that I really like the idea of signs. To Albany Bold, because I feel like that's a permanent sort of advertising. So it's just something I wanted to put out there. I know it's new, but I don't think we have to only include things that have already been recommended, so.
Well, since we're we're on the subject of of the bulb. I think I think it is true that the bulb is a great recreational community amenity with within Albany, and I think it is also true. That. Not as many people know about it as you would think. And and I I could, I could see that there would be lasting value to. Programs or improvements that increase community knowledge of the bulb. And facilitate access to the bulb. And support programs. In the bulb. And I don't know how other people feel about this, I'm. I I I could go for adding something to our recommendation that's sort of bold, general. I'm I'm not, I'm not sure exactly. What the specifics would be. But but I could, I could be persuaded to to support including something in our recommendation on this.
I just have a clarifying question, though, because I understood from when we were doing our work plan. That it was premature for us to do a lot with the waterfront because of the fact that they were still negotiating with. East Bay Regional Park, or there were still things happening in that sort of larger negotiation and that. When they finished that, it would come to us for more of a community planning session or something like that. So I just wanted to understand if, maybe this is a question for Isabel, if we were to make a recommendation about the bulb, is that actionable in the next twelve months? Or do we need to await further guidance from council on that, or what, could you just share what you can about where we are in that process?
Well, I think the intent is still to eventually. Work out an agreement with East Bay Regional Park District, the East Bay Regional Park District to. So that they can take over the ball, but the timeline for that, I think, is. Beyond twelve months and I'm not quite sure, at this point, we, I don't have a specific timeline for that.
Okay.
That will happen.
I I suspect that if if we could make a strong argument for supporting programs there, there might be support, but I don't see them supporting any sort of infrastructure there. Just because, you know, three years from now, who knows what's gonna happen. It's in this very weird place and has been for a while and it's gonna continue to be for a while.
So my my experience. Is that a great way that I discover new places is my children being taken there on a school trip. Or learning about it in a classroom. And then them telling me about it and taking me there, and then I discover it too, and then it becomes a great thing that we do. And so, so if if the commission is interested in. In programs associated with the bulb. You know, I I I could see, you know, maybe the. You know, the love the bulb going into the schools to talk to kids about the bulb. Taking them on a field trip to the bulb to learn about some, you know, something related to. I don't know, anything really. And that be, that that being a way to to both target. The expenditure of these funds on children, which I think a lot of people are supportive of, as well as to promote and support. Increase awareness of and enjoyment of the ball. Just an idea.
So if it's all right, I'd like to wait one more suggestion that ties back to those one that I pushed for last year, and that is the public restroom. And I I know that right now the city has a porta potty across from the senior center because the parks are closed. I mean, even just keeping that there, I assume it doesn't have a hand washing station. I assume it has sanitizer there. But some sort of facility like that, again, I, you know, I even, I can even argue, you know, I would even argue that that promotes being outside and and. Walking rather than driving, but.
And so in. In addition to the bulb and the public restroom, I think another idea that was expressed by a number of commissioners. Was to use some of these funds. For kind of general expenditures, including capital, capital improvements that. Support a livable Albany, I think that's what somebody said, to support kind of. In in to to fund the infrastructure that's necessary. To, for people to have a healthy lifestyle. And that, I think that could be part of our recommendation, if that's something that the commission is interested in. I'm I'm interested or open to that idea. I'm 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 curious what others think about it.
I'm not totally sure that I understand what falls under that umbrella, because we had a lot of suggestions reading from like LED lights in a park. That then maybe aren't really the right thing, because there's a lot of things shifting to like a restroom to like, so. I guess that's a little vague for me to know how I feel about it.
So I I guess we we could, we we could include some specific types of improvements that we have in mind. And then ultimately it will be the city and the council to to determine where the need is greatest. For me, bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements is at at the top of the list. I want it to be. Easy and safe for adults and childrens and seniors to get around the city by bike and by foot and by other non-motorized forms of transportation. And having funding available to make improvements to support that. What seems to me like it would be a good use of these funds.
So one of one of my suggestions was to to put money into the sidewalk fund, you know, it I believe that fund is about fifty thousand a year. It could be significantly boosted, at least for a year, kind of goes in that line.
Well, I think we already have a, I mean, I I agree that we, the only reason I wouldn't want to do that is because we already have a funding source for the sidewalk repair. I don't think we really have a funding source for trees and sometimes the trees can look at the sidewalk repair, so I'd be. More interested in your other suggestion for the, you know, funding trees, street trees. And then, and maybe some street tree like block party. Sort of efforts. And then I think I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Patterson, about the vagueness. I think it's true that we could use. The rationale of what we're, what we're trying to do with that that sort of. Thought, but then really be specific about what we want to fund. So the trees would fall under that, you know, making Albany more livable and then any other kind of, you know, bike. Education program. For the bulb, I think, I just want to reiterate the signage and maybe I didn't. Nobody said anything about that, but I do think that signage on the streets about the location of the bulb and oh, and Commissioner Noble, I really liked the idea of. The school programs too, and I think actually that's the one kind of field trip programming that could still happen. With shelter in place, you know, with moderate restrictions because it's outdoor, you know. I'm just wondering if, though, also we could do something that's, it's not infrastructure of the kind that you could use, but it would be a permanent. Sort of advertisement of the bulb on the on Marin or on Solano.
Yeah, I I would, I agree that a lot of people don't know much about the bulb or have never even been there, even though they've lived in Albany for years, so I I agree with. You know, spending some small sum on signage, sounds like a good idea. Even even something pretty close, like there's the the new bus, we haven't seen it in operation yet, but the park and ride, there's. It could even put some signage right there saying, you know, hey, just a few feet that way, you've got, you know, and list some of the things. Also further into town that. Could even put, you know, a post with arrows pointing at all different directions to the different parks and, you know, something clever like that. And as far as school, I I don't know if we can, I would like to, you know, recommend that the school make field trips to the bulb, but. I I don't think that's our place necessarily. The 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 program that teaches kids on bikes, it sounds like we're an improvement on that. And they could potentially, I don't know if we can, you know, micromanage them, but they could potentially ride to the bulb. I I know my daughter on the mountain biking team, they often ride, not often, but there's certain times a year when they go to the bulb. And the kids ride around there and many of them have never really been around before. And learn some skills on the trails there, so there is some of that going on, but very, very small right now, but I don't, I don't know how we could. Facilitate that through the schools as being a city organization.
Okay, so in an effort to try to. Come to a complete recommendation on this, I want to ask. Do we, do we want to include again the water bottle filling stations in our recommendation?
I'm gonna say, I mean, I'm the hugest proponent of water bottle filling stations, but it sounds like all the buildings have had them in put in place right now. And quite honestly, water fountains are one of, are a terrible source of transmission of disease at the moment, so. I actually don't think this is the year to invest anymore in that, and I do think that the outdoor ones are gonna be more cost prohibitive. So my personal feeling is that we should move that off for now and be happy about this eight that we have put in, which are delivering a value. Or would be if we weren't in a pandemic and. Then move on to other ideas for this year and then maybe reconsider it in the future.
Does anybody object to that?
No, I I I like that reasoning. I'm just wondering, Isabel, are the, are all, are any. Water fountains not yet changed to water, to water filling stations? Just responding to Commissioner Patterson's response about the transmission, I've heard that too. But wouldn't water bottle filling stations be less of a transmission?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity to switch out any water fountain with the water filling station?
As we've done all the parks, so all the water fountains at the parks have been replaced or there's a bottle filler that's been added to the water fountain. To at 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 all of the city parks. Again, the only facility that does not have a bottle filler at this time is the senior center.
Okay, thanks.
And then, I I would still recommend that we. Vote to approve water filling and hand washing at the beach slash bulb. I think that would help people. Get out there and help in the short term with the, and the long term with sanitation.
So Isabel, that would require extending water service to the bulb, is that correct?
Yes.
And what would be the approximate cost of that?
I don't know, but I think it would be beyond the scope of the SSB funding at this point. We'd have to find another source.
By orders of magnitude, right?
Yes.
We can recommend it and let the city council look into it.
And sewage, yeah. Water line that goes out there, but nobody knows who it belongs to. We ran into this, remember that, Brian? We were, we talking to. Anyway, long story, but there's water out there, they just don't know who it belongs to, it's weird.
So I I do want to put this to the full commission. Do do we want to make a recommendation of providing water filling station? At the waterfront, which would require the extension of water service? I think Commissioner Martin is a yes. Are there any other yeses? No, okay, so I think we're gonna completely cross the water bottle filling station. Off of, off of the list and then going down, so the free nutrition, cooking, gardening classes. I I I sort of heard lukewarm support from some commissioners on continuing to recommend this. Thought thoughts on whether we should recommend this in some. Modified form or to also take this one off the list?
Can I just ask a process question here, because I I definitely felt like I heard several people mention that they would feel comfortable leaving some amount of money for the city council to direct based on needs. So by my math, if you had the crossing guard and the safe routes to school or the crossing guard safe route to school, and if anyone wanted the Healthy Me and Movement. Either way, that we're talking about one fifty to one sixty of the two hundred thousand dollars already. So I guess I'm just wondering, and I say this as someone who was a proponent of these other ones that are not on that list. If we would be adequate in making a motion about those three things and saying. There are other things we could have recommended, but we are aware that there may be a need to use this money for these other purposes, and that might be adequate. For our job in terms of giving guidance. I don't know how others feel, but I just, that seems to be where we have the strongest amount of consensus. That seems to be where we have the strongest amount of consensus.
Yeah, so we've we've allocated one fifty out of our two hundred. And if we want to stop there, we we can. I think we should give. I think we should give a recommendation for the full two hundred and the the remaining fifty could be just. You know, to utilize as the city council sees fit. I I think I would prefer to have a more. Specific recommendation for that remaining fifty. And the reason I was going down this list is just to to be able to cross those off. To verify that that the commission no longer thinks that it should be part of our recommendation.
You're trying to bring us to a decision.
I am.
I would I would just just kind of reiterate that. All of this, everything is just a it's a recommendation goes into the full of recommendations. All of it is up to the the council be flexible with. It's not for us to say, we're gonna leave you this amount. It's not like this is, they're gonna adopt this or not. It's 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 just, these are recommendations or just suggestions.
No, I understand, but it just didn't sound like we have consensus in these other areas. I mean, I will I will vote for nutrition and cooking classes, and I will vote for fitness classes. But I think I'm one of only one or two people that was gonna vote for those. So. I was just in the interest of time, wondering if we had more consensus around a motion that was around those first two or three, but. I'm fine with whatever process and I do support the nutrition and cooking classes, and I especially support them for youth.
Does does anybody else wish for the for the commission to include the. Those classes as part of our recommendation? No, okay, what about the and does that include the physical fitness classes as well? Okay, all right, so.
Maybe get Isabel's input on her thoughts on how those went or Eva's. Since Eva's been working with those programs. What their sense of how it went and what would happen if we didn't fund.
Sure, Eva, do you want to provide an overview?
Sure, I can kind of give you my my two cents. And this also comes, you know, we, I asked staff to. That who helped with registration, who, when people canceled. Were the ones who had to quickly call the people on the waitlist and everything, and so who were really involved in specifically the cooking classes. As it was mentioned, we did offer it to youth and adults, and they kind of each had. Their own their their own successes and their own downfalls as well, where. Sometimes kids got signed up by their parents who were like, great, free camp. They didn't want to be there and they all signed up with their friends and everything too. So it wasn't. Compared to a class that one had to pay for, where there were kids who really wanted to be there and. That 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 dynamic was challenging, I think, for the instructors. The adult classes, as we mentioned, too, there were a lot of no shows. There just wasn't any ownership of. Ownership is my word, but people just didn't really feel invested in it. Because it was free. I think Commissioner Abbott also mentioned too that the people who were taking the classes weren't necessary. They probably could have afforded to take them anyways. I believe the commission last year had mentioned maybe even. Offering them to kids with free and reduced lunches. That was an option that was proposed at some point too by staff to see the people who who could really use these nutrition classes. As far as the fitness goes. As we mentioned before, the the number in the seven hundreds was not individual participants, so it was. Not entirely. You know, doesn't paint the best picture of the programs themselves. I would say the fitness classes, while there were a few that were very successful. There were there were plenty where the instructor had only two people or one person, or it was the same two people each time. I think we learned a lot from the experience too, and if that was something that council. Allocated some funds to, I think we would be able to make some. Modification so that they were more successful. And we have some ideas on that too. Hopefully that answered your question.
That's helpful for me. I would actually withdraw my support for both of those programs, given that just because I feel like we need to regroup and figure it out, and it sounds like we have more. Pressing priorities, but I do think that having fitness programs in the parks in the long run is. Is a good way to promote equity and to kind of. Ensure access and opportunities to try things, but it sounds like we maybe don't know exactly how best to do it right yet and. So I would be more in favor of of not allocate or not making a recommendation about allocations to that.
Okay, so I think we have agreement on that now. So. The the Healthy Me Music and Movement Program that was allocated ten thousand dollars last time, I. I'm personally in support of specifically calling that out as something to. Fund what's the what's the. Wish of the commission on this?
I have a question on that. I just wanted to clarify. My understanding is that the school district. Wants to continue that program and and they have had a positive experience with that.
Yes, that's correct. So basically, this program, we contract with. A nonprofit that provides similar classes in Berkeley, in the Berkeley schools, and I think she's also expanding into Richmond. Her program has really. Been in all the programs have been funded with SSB because she's. Geared her curriculum towards a healthy lifestyle. And it's basically a program that she does through school districts. So basically, we she invoices the city for the program. We pay her, but the the program is implemented in the schools.
The only comment I would have to that is that. It's not that I oppose it at all, and if the city council decides to do it, that's fine. I just feel like we don't have to recommend what. Is on the is in the queue. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is like. They're gonna have these recommendations from other other departments potentially. We don't think we ever did that first recommendation for the healthy, do we, Isabel? I don't think that came from our commission last year.
No, it came from the school district.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking that like I I feel like we should kind of stay in our lane, you know, and recommend what's the Recreation and Park Commission. Objectives rather than going out and recommending what should the school district want. So. I would just only say that that's why I would not recommend it because I don't feel like it's within the scope of our commission in terms of programming.
Well, not not to belabor the point. I think we can recommend whatever we want. If we think this is a good use of the funds, we can recommend it. If we want to. Make recommendations of regarding bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We can recommend that, even though that might fall more neatly under the the Transportation Commission's purview. So I think we we shouldn't feel constrained about what we are recommending recommending and feel feel like it only has to relate specifically to parks and recreation programs.
Right. And the other thing I want to mention is that the Safe Route to School program is also implemented through the school's PE program. So it's another program that's been funded. Through a nonprofit cycle of change that implements those programs in schools PE classes.
Yeah, so let's just let's make a decision on this. Commissioners who want to specifically call this out within our recommendation, let's give me a thumbs up. Okay, all right. So I think we're gonna we'll we'll include that. So that means that there's we're at a hundred and sixty thousand. Right now, and that if we wish to provide a recommendation on the full amount, there's forty thousand left. And I think the two big ideas that have been discussed. That are not already included or set aside is. Funds for the bulb, something related to the bulb. And then I think the other big idea is sort of funding capital improvements and other. Infrastructure that supports. A a a livable community. Just generally speaking. And so. I guess. I I see those as the as the other two big ideas that we could use to fill this forty thousand. We could maybe split it between the two. We could also decide to stop now and just say, this is this is our recommendation. And leave it at that. So thought thoughts on. Do any any motions or recommendations for? How to wrap this up?
I mean, I'd be happy to make a motion, but I think there's still a question mark for me about whether people want to put something earmarked for the bulb or not. Because I think whatever's left over would be in that other fund. So. I am taking note of Commissioner Abbott's comment about probably there wouldn't be a lot of support for infrastructure at the bulb. Because the most obvious thing to me had seemed like some kind of storage or portable storage place to put equipment. To put, you know, things that could be used for classes or things that could be used. To activate that park for people. It's harder for me to understand exactly what programmatically we'd want to direct at this stage. Or what dollar amount that would what that recommendation would carry, but I think. But I'd I'd also be open to something that just says like, create. Some number of programs to help activate the bulb and just assign a dollar amount to it. Maybe it's. I don't even know what it would be, ten thousand dollars, five thousand. I have no idea what that number should be. And then let the rest of it be in kind of a sort of. Pot for. The advancement of whatever you said.
I I for myself, I don't I don't feel any need to fill in that two hundred dollars exactly or the full thing. We're just making suggestions. They're gonna take pick and choose the ideas from wherever it comes from. So I think that's perfectly fine if we just want to say we're done. I want to put another, you know, forty thousand dollars isn't really very much money as far as something like this concerned. So I. Trying to think about things I could actually accomplish with that. I actually like the idea of of street trees. I don't know how much that could be done, but. That could go for a a street tree event for, you know, just planting some trees. I'm not even sure the forty thousand would cover any part of that, significant part of that. So. I, you know, either that or I would put it into the sidewalk fund, just kind of boost that, or I would be comfortable just saying here, you know, these are the suggestions we we can support at this point.
I would be in favor of something that's. Encouraging like Commissioner. Previous commissioner said of encouraging events at the bulb. I don't know exactly. I know it's mostly allocating dollar figures for this item, so. The city council would be, but if there's a way to voice that, that would be good. And. I would be opposed to putting any of these funds into sidewalks because those are earmarked funds that it already has. And this this is general fund money that could be used for anything.
So how about we do another thumbs up thing? Do we want to specifically say anything about the bulb in our recommendation? We have, we have four. Okay, so we have a majority who would who who would like to say something about the bulb. Okay, of 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 those four of you who who wish to say something about the bulb. What what's your what's your proposal for what for what the recommendation should include regarding the bulb?
I think it should include language about activating the bulb through programmatic activities. And a dollar amount, say ten thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, and I would look to guidance from the staff about. What's a realistic amount to put on a few things that would bring people out there?
I think, given, given the fact that we can't, we may not be able to congregate for a while, I I like that idea for the future, but I think that. I really think signs, just a couple signs that are a couple thousand dollars. I know that that's gonna have to maybe go through many a bigger process. Because we don't have a lot of signs telling people what, you know, amenities we have in Albany. But something maybe on Solano or Marin that directs people to the bulb. And and then I also vote for street trees as a as a funding measure.
I'm in favor of signage and. I would be in favor of recommending a some a programmatic approach, as Commissioner Patterson. Said that the outdoor space is more conducive to spreading out than say something events at a at the community center, for example.
So how about we say something like. Use use of funds to. To support activating the bulb through. Activities, improvements and and other methods and just leave it sort of general at that and. Assign a modest amount as part of our recommendation of something like ten thousand dollars. Is would for for you bold advocates, is that that be? Would that be okay? We could even include the word.
I think if you.
Signage in there as an example of the sort of thing that that might be appropriate. Or beneficial. Would that be okay? Okay, all right. And then so so that that checks off the bulb. And then what about this idea of. Funding capital improvements and infrastructure as needed to support. Healthy lifestyles and a livable community. I mean. Who who doesn't like that?
That sounds too vague. What what are what are they actually going to pick up the phone and order? So I don't I don't know how they would do that.
I I would rather, for that reason, just not say anything, you know, I think it's it's it's. It's not enough money for something that I would call a capital improvement, for instance.
Any other feelings on this? So so I think so I think we have we have a recommendation. So just to summarize. We're recommending continuing to fund the Crossing Guard program at a hundred and thirty thousand. Continuing to fund the Safe Routes to School program at twenty thousand. Fund the Healthy Me and Music program at ten thousand. To fund. The programs for the bulb to support. The use and enjoy enjoyment of the bulb as a form of recreation for the community. And then we leave it at that. Commissioner Frank?
I think we didn't take a vote and we may not have consensus, but we may not have votes for it, but we didn't take a vote on the street trees, which Commissioner Abbott recommended.
Oh, okay. Street trees.
Could I ask for someone to state, just to restate what that what how that comes? How you view that?
So i- in the past, the city has, one way or the other, I think actually some of the trees were donated, would have street tree planning events and and. And residents could say, hey, I'd like a street tree, and there would be a day or a month, or I don't remember what it was. When, you know, it was kind of a process. One day, there'd be the the concrete cutters out there, or even the the homeowners would be responsible for clearing the concrete. Then the city would come out, plant the tree, and off they go. So it just encouraged a lot of people to plant. I think the city actually had a grant for that, like ten years ago, thereabouts. I'm not sure forty thousand is gonna get you very far on that, but I definitely support the idea, so.
Yeah, my block did it about ten years ago. My block did it and it was very successful. We could use another round even because there's. There's still a lot of homes that don't have trees in front of them, even though it would have been free.
Okay, so do we want to do the thumbs up on the street trees? Okay, so all right, so we've added that to our list as well. Okay, so Isabel, did you? Did you get that?
Uh, yes, I did. And if I could, you could make a recommendation with a motion. That would finalize your recommendation.
Okay. Does somebody wish to make a motion?
I will move that we make the recommendation that we have listed. I don't want to write you at all right now. You just did that.
I can do that if you'd like.
You think you 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 caught that? Did you catch that?
I think I have. I think so. You you let me know.
I move then.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Isabel was gonna read it off.
Yeah.
Oh, you are?
I can, yes. If you'd like me to, I can.
I personally, okay, so I see some commissioners nodding. Okay.
Okay, so the recommendation is to include first a Crossing Guards program at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Number two is a Safe Route to School program at twenty thousand. Number three is the Healthy Me and Movement program at ten thousand. And then number four is the use of funds to support activation. At the bulb for activities, improvements, signage and other methods. At ten thousand for the enjoyment of the community at ten thousand dollars. And the last one is street trees. Did you want to add a little bit more to the street trees? Did you want to add a little bit more to the street trees? Or that?
Oh. Julia?
For livability, for livability aesthetics.
No, I I mean like a a program providing free street trees or subsidized street trees for to encourage. What Commissioner Chen Frank was about to say.
Program to provide.
Exactly, the the combination of those, you know.
Okay, program to provide or subsidize street trees for livability and aesthetics. That's it.
All right, that's what I move.
Something that's more like to promote the. Or the inclusion of more street trees through either subsidized or free trees, because then it could also include the event that you're talking about or something like that. Or are you hoping it just pays for the trees?
Oh, could you say that one more time?
Just to promote the.
I liked what you said, I just forgot, yeah.
Planning of additional street trees through either subsidized or free trees. To encourage livability and aesthetics, et cetera, whatever.
Yeah.
Because then it could also just be, not just the free trees, but also what if there's a community, a promotion event or something that helps to.
Sure. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's what I move.
All right, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so Isabel, can we have a roll call vote, please?
So Commissioner Abbott.
I.
Commissioner Frank. Commissioner Martin.
I.
Commissioner Nagus.
I.
Commissioner Patterson. And Chernobyl.
I. Okay, so that motion passes, and we are done with Agenda Item 6.1. Next on our agenda is future agenda items.
Can I just ask what the current city policy is about meetings? I know we did this because it was time sensitive and there was a necessity. Are you currently envisioning that the commission will be meeting monthly, or is that still something being determined as we go forward? Or is it, are we meeting virtually, or are we not, yeah, what what could you share about that that would help us?
Yeah, we're still conducting only essential meetings, essential city business, so at this point I don't have. Any idea whether or not the commission will have a meeting next month.
Great. In that case, I don't have any agenda items. But a question for that, oh, sorry Isabel, if if we do, you know, restrictions lift in some way and we do continue meetings. Can we, I guess, submit to the chair agenda items that we'd like to be considered, or should we be talking about that now for whenever that future meeting happens?
Yeah, I think you can do that now, and you can always submit agenda items to the chair and the staff. And then the staff and the chair work together to. To create the 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 agenda for the next meetings, but preferably it's it's better to do it during a public meeting.
I'd like to have agenda items for some updates, for example, from Public Works regarding various things. That we've either approved or discussed, for example, pickleball court. And at the last meeting, there was the basketball discussed at the Memorial Park, and I think that's resolved, but it would be good to get an update on that. Also, I've been walking around Albany Hill a fair amount, and. It looks like a lot of it's just about finished, a lot of the work that we were overseeing or the planning from the last few years, so. Like to, if if it's come to a good stage of completion, to get an update on that. And whenever we can get education on what's the city's role at the bulb and our role at the bulb, that should be put on the agenda.
Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Martin, I agree with the update, but also. Wondering if you could provide an update on the strategic planning process for. And maybe not even an update, but an agenda, if if it is something that we still plan to do, I'd love to just talk about how to. What some of the next steps are for public involvement for planning process like that.
Anyone else? Okay, so that brings us to next meeting, which is to be determined. So Isabel will let us know when we have our next meeting. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, commissioners, thank you, public, for your participation this evening. Thanks, everybody, great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.